And everybody and welcome to the city of Fort Lauderdale Infrastructure Task Force Joint Meeting today to discuss a number of things, particular in particular our our proposed water treatment plant. I appreciate everyone coming today. So I just want to say a couple of things. It's unfortunate that we're only able to get the commission together and the task force together for one hour today. I'm told by city staff that it may take a good part of that hour to make their presentation. So as to not have anyone leave the room or leave the meeting thinking that they did not have an opportunity to participate, we I think is going to be smart if the commission agrees to a second meeting before we vote on this so that people have an opportunity to speak and and they certainly amongst the members of the infrastructure task force have an opportunity to ask questions. And then if there's of course, if there's time, I'd love to hear from the public. The public always has the opportunity to to speak with us individually, calling us, emailing us. They don't have to wait for the meeting to ask questions. But I think that today's presentation is going to be very, very important. And I want to thank city staff for all the work that they did in order to put this together. And and also the members of the infrastructure task force who have gone really well and above and beyond any expectation anyone would ever think that a volunteer would make towards their commitment in trying to make Fort Lauderdale a better place. And and you know, it feels makes me feel good as mayor to know that we have such a committed and dedicated community in making things for the making things happen for the for everyone's best interest. So having said that, David, do you want to say something?
I was just gonna call roll.
Okay, so before we begin the proceedings, if you could please call the role of the commission and of the task.
Commissioner Herbst not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thurman?
Here.
Mayor Trent House?
Here. We have a coronal commission.
Chairman Momo.
I know Mr. Herbst is in the building because I saw his truck out there. So anyway, all right.
Michael Marshall?
Here.
Shane Grabsky?
Here.
Ralph Saltman?
Here.
Roosevelt Walters?
Here.
Jerry Angeli?
Here.
Peter Partington?
Here.
James Labrie?
Here.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So there are several presentations that are going to be made today. And Mr. Dodd, do you want to introduce the first presenter? I think it's Hensel Phelps that's going to discuss the first part of this?
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. What I'm going to do is go to the first two slides and very quickly talk. This is the agenda that we'll be following. We'll do a presentation by Hazen and Sawyer, who is the city's owner representative.
Okay, Hazen, okay.
And that will be approximately 20 to 25 minutes. We'll answer any question you have on that to talk about the current condition of the water plant and the efforts that were made to decide what type of plant needs to be built to replace it, the type of technology and where it should be located. We'll then turn it over to Ridgewood IDE, which is the project company that's proposing the P three, and they will talk through the details of their their proposal.
Okay, and I would ask the members of the commission to write down their questions so that after the presentation, we can ask the questions. I know there's always that urge to to jump in and ask at that point, but we really need to accomplish a lot today. So if we can just do it that way, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dodd.
So very quickly, I think most of you are aware of we've been working on this since 2017 when the Rees report came out, the utility strategic master plan that said we need to look at our long term water treatment needs. We did a study, the Corolla report in 2019 that helped to inform what our city needs are, which led up to the unsolicited proposals and a flurry of activity that I won't go through here over the last year and a half that got us up to this point. And and that it's all just part of the record. But at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Pat Davis. He is the vice president from Hazen and Sawyer, who will introduce the rest of their team. Pat Davis has more than 40 years of experience working in water and utility infrastructure, particularly with the city of Fort Lauderdale, very aware of our needs and the works that have been going on. So Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Alan. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners and Infrastructure Task Force, thanks for inviting us here today. And Alan's right, I've been working on this stuff for 43 years. By the way, also a Fort Lauderdale native and a Fort Lauderdale resident. So I'm very interested in this subject. Hazen received the task order in May of 2022 to provide some advice relative to the technical aspects, not the commercial aspects, but the technical aspects of the new water treatment plant. And the reason for that is that Hazen and Sawyer has an in-depth knowledge of your system. We have international expertise. We work all over the world. And we also have a drinking water practice group that specializes in looking at what are the emerging regulations, emerging contaminants of concern, and to make sure that anything that is designed is useful for far into the future. So we've had a team of folks who have been looking at some of the technical issues that Alan Dodd and his staff have shared with us. Some of the key people in this team are with me today. Janine Wick-Greevy over here has 28 years of experience and Janine led the design of the nano filtration facility at your Peel Dixie Water Treatment Plant. Remember, Peel Dixie was 70 years old back in the early 2000s. It started to fail. The city could not keep it going. And their decision was to abandon the plant or build something new with modern technology. And Janine led that. George Brown is also with me today, and George will speak. George has 27 years of experience, and he has an incredibly detailed knowledge of the Five Ash Plant, which is the plant we're talking about today. He's done a number of rehabilitation designs there. So he knows all the nuts and bolts and wires, and he can help us understand this better. And finally, the third part of our our team is Dr. Bill Becker. Bill is here today. Bill has 40 years' experience in water engineering. He's appointed to the EPA Science Advisory Board in 2020. He is Hazen and Sawyer's senior most drinking water practice leader. He has a PhD from Johns Hopkins University. And in addition to what he does at Hazen and Sawyer day in and day out, he's also been or is a professor at Columbia and University of Colorado Boulder. Now, the city's completed multiple studies in the past to form the basis for their decision to replace the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. And Hazen's opinions and observations on the technical aspects of these largely are found in these three reports. Alan mentioned at the beginning that there was a Reese report done in 2017. There was a Corolla report in 2019. Then there was some recent piloting work. And I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that these reports didn't replace each other. The city constantly does water master plans, the city and all cities. And these are not static documents. They're dynamic. And the reason that water master plans are dynamic is regulations change on a regular basis. The amount of water we're able to withdraw change on a regular basis. Climate changes. So it seems to me, as a Fort Lauderdale resident who watches all of your meetings and listens to a lot of this, there may have been a slight misunderstanding that there was a Reese report that said something and a Corolla report that said something else, and that they refuted each other. And we've gone through these from front to back, and that that's not an accurate understanding. Science progresses. And so there have been a number of reports even prior to 2017 that looked at ways to modify Five Ash, and every subsequent report built on the work that was done before. And these reports continued with that process. So we've looked through all of these data going back to 1990. And there are seven questions that Director Dodd asked us to address today. What constitutes the city's water infrastructure? Just so we all know what we're talking about. Does the city's water meet the current standards from EPA and the state? Why is a new water treatment plant needed? What were the detailed findings of the recent Corolla reports? Is the technology proposed by Corolla, which apparently is also the technology being proposed by your vendor, likely to meet the city's three fundamental water treatment goals? Are there alternatives to the current P three delivery process? And when we say delivery, just the way you build the plant. So this separates from the technology, but just how you build it. And then finally, how does the current Ridgewood IDE cost compared to the costs that were predicted in the Corolla report? So we'll briefly address each one of these. And then afterwards, if you guys have questions, we're available to answer these. I'd like to ask George Brown to come up and do a few of these questions, starting with what constitutes the city's water infrastructure, just to provide definition for what we're talking about today.
George?
Thank you, Pat. George Brown with Hazen and Sawyer. First, we're define what we're talking about today. The city's water system infrastructure includes many parts, but we're going to focus today on water supply and water treatment plants. The city's water supply and treatment infrastructure includes two wellfields, the Prospect Wellfield and the Dixie Wellfield. Each of those wellfields supply a certain treatment plant. Prospect supplies the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant, and Dixie supplies the Dixie Water Treatment Plant. The city's water supply is the Biscayne Aquifer, which is largely recharged by rainfall. It's just under our feet. It's about 200 feet deep, and it covers the area of Miami-Dade and Broward County. Both of the city's wellfields withdraw water from the Biscayne Aquifer. And also, I'd just like to point out that the city has invested in alternative water supply sources for the future. That includes the C 51 Reservoir Project, where the city purchased a three MGD Biscayne Aquifer offset. In addition, the city constructed two Florida and Aquifer test wells. The city owns an old water treatment plant and a newer water treatment plant. The old water treatment plant is Five Ash. It was constructed originally in 1953. It was expanded many times over the last 70 years. Additionally, the city owns a state of the art membrane treatment plant. A membrane treatment plant is simply imagine it. My analogy is it's a high pressure cheesecloth. You squeeze the water through the cheesecloth, you got clean water on one side, and you have contaminants on the other side. The Peel Dixie Water Treatment Plant was replaced in 2008. It had a 1920 zero lime softening plant. And in in the year 2000, the city made certain decisions that to replace that plant. Those decisions were based on the city could not meet the the city's color goal with this plant. It was at the end of its useful life, and it could not treat emerging The Five Ash Water Treatment Plant utilizes utilizes the same lime softening treatment technology that was replaced in 2008 at the Peel Dixie Water Treatment Plant. Over the last 20 years, the city's invested about $25 million in maintenance type projects at the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant to maintain its operability. The next question we're going to answer is, does the city's water meet required standards? And the answer is yes. The city meets drinking, the city's drinking water complies with local, state, and federal primary standards. To document that compliance, the city has an environmental testing laboratory. They work 365 days a year. They test the water approximately 65,000 times per year, testing in the water supply, in the water treatment plants, and in the distribution system to document compliance with regulatory standards. The third question we'll answer is, why is a new water treatment plant needed? There's three key reasons the water plant, the the city decided to replace Five Ash. The first is it's existing, the existing Five Ash cannot meet the city's water quality goal of producing clear water. You notice the photograph on the right has yellow tinged water. That's the average output of the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. It has a color, what's called a color number of 16 color units. And the city's goal is to reduce it below five, which would be non-visible. The Prospect Wellfield raw water color has historically averaged 55 color units. This high color in the city's Biscayne Aquifer water supply is characteristic of the wellfields in this area. The Five Ash Water Treatment Plant cannot achieve the city's finished water color goal of less than five color units, five being below the visible detection limit. On the chart with the polka dots, I got blue polka, blue circles, that's the Five Ash colored, averages 16 color units. In the green squares at the bottom, it illustrates the Peel Dixie for comparison. Peel Dixie's state of the art membrane plant, it produces a color on average of 1.4 color units, well below the city's color goal. Over the years, the city's made an investment in in studying how to reduce color at Five Ash. Since 1991, the city's invested about $2 million in these studies. None of these reports have proven retrofitting Five Ash with a color removal process would achieve the city's color goal. The second key reason why the city decided to replace Five Ash is it's near the end of its useful life. And that's evidenced as the the evaluations performed by Reese and Corolla, they both concluded the plant is at the end of its useful life. Water treatment plants do not last forever. This table illustrates certain key components of the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant and typical useful life. The current age of many of those components is beyond their useful life. Those are the items that are highlighted in bold orange font. The conclusion is that nearly all components of Five Ash are near or at the end of their useful life. The third key reason for replacing Five Ash is the existing technology. The third key reason for replacing Five Ash is the existing technology is ineffective at the removal of an emerging contaminant known as PFAS. You might have read about this in media recently, it's often referred to as the forever chemical. There's no current regulatory limit on PFAS, but regulations are imminent. Emerging contaminants, including PFAS, exist in our water supply. It enters the Biscayne Wellfield, or Biscayne Aquifer. And so, replacing Five Ash with a state-of-the-art treatment technology is a key goal of the city to ensure protection of its drinking water for its customers. These charts demonstrate that Five Ash does not remove PFAS, whereas the Peel-Dixie Water Treatment Plant, which is 100% membrane, removes 99% of PFAS that's in the wellfield. The technologies that were proposed by Corolla for Five Ash replacement are ion exchange and nanofiltration. Those are effective technologies for PFAS removal. Fourth, what did the Reese and Corolla report find? The Reese report in 2017 presented certain conclusions. Five Ash produces safe drinking water. Five Ash is at the end of its useful life. Building a new and innovative water treatment plant may be the best option for the city. Reese evaluated eight potential color removal strategies and concluded that one of these technologies would need to be implemented. The three technologies they suggested was nanofiltration, ion exchange plus lime softening, or lime softening plus GAC, which is granular activated carbon, and ozone. Reese recommended pilot testing of ozone and GAC as the preferred removal, color removal The 2019 Corolla report then performed GAC testing. That report also had certain conclusions. First was Five Ash produces safe drinking water, so they found the same thing as Reese. They also confirmed Reese's opinion that Five Ash is at the end of its useful life. Their GAC bench scale pilot test indicated that the technology was not feasible from a cost perspective. The graph on the right illustrates the cost estimate that Corolla prepared for GAC annual regeneration cost, which amounts to about $158 million per year, which is 10 times the operating cost of the other technologies that Corolla reviewed. We have confirmed that it's about $150 million per year, based on the data that's included in the Corolla report. The 2019 Corolla report also evaluated 17 potential color removal schemes and recommended a new water treatment plant, which was nanofiltration and ion exchange, to be constructed at the Prospect Wellfield. The 2019 alternative screening report issued by Corolla was the basis that the city, or the basis that was used by the P3 proposers for the unsolicited proposal. So the question becomes, can the city's goals be achieved by implementing the new treatment plant as recommended by Corolla? And the answer is yes, it meets Goal One, which is finished water color less than five units. Goal Two, replace Five Ash, it's at the end of its useful life. Yes, the proposed treatment plant would impart, it would replace all of the treatment facilities. The city would continue to operate the existing storage tanks, high-service pumps, and clearwells. And then Goal Three, provide effective treatment for PFAS removal. Yes, the technology recommended by Corolla has the highest likelihood of the alternatives that were evaluated. The city decided in late 2020 to pilot test a short-term color removal process for Five Ash as an interim solution to lower color at Five Ash while the city pursued replacing Five Ash. Reese pilot tested a technology called Advanced Oxidation Process combined with biologically activated carb, active carbon filtration. Reese's report was issued in September 2021. The city staff determined that the technology was not feasible to go forward. The BAC portion of the test, the biologically activated carbon, was greatly impacted by solids overflow from the clarifier, resulting in an inability to reduce color. Number five, is the technology proposed by Corolla likely to meet all three fundamental goals of the city? In Hazen's opinion, the technology Corolla recommended is likely to meet all of the city's goals, current goals, and expected regulations. Finished water color should be below the city's goal of five or less, at least 90% of the time. This proposed treatment plant will replace all the Five Ash treatment facilities, which are at the end of their useful life. Regulation of PFAS in drinking water is imminent. The proposed technology is state-of-the-art for PFAS removal. So in summary, the existing Five Ash Water Treatment Plant is at the end of its useful life. The city needs a new water treatment plant. The treatment process proposed by IDE Ridgewood is likely to meet the city's goals.
Thanks, George. Just two more questions to answer. But I did want to point out, because George commented quite frequently about this thing called PFAS, and we read about it in the New York Times and everywhere else, about the forever chemical. And I just would like to remind the Commission and the Infrastructure Task Force that PFAS has not been an issue that has been looked at in detail in all your past studies, because it's a new emerging contaminant of concern, and it's a new regulation that the EPA is about to place on us. So this is not a criticism at all of anybody, of Corolla, or of Reese, or of all of the companies before them, not criticizing them, it just simply was not an issue of urgency for them. It is an issue of urgency now. We do not want to drink PFAS, so whatever we do, we've got to make sure we can remove that forever chemical from the system. So a different question, are there alternatives to the delivery system? So getting off technology for a minute, but just how you're going to build the plant. Can you do something other than P3? And the answer is yes. So if you look at the right side of this graphic, there are four different ways that are typically utilized to deliver or build a plant of this size. The top two, fixed-price design-build and progressive design-build are variations of each other. But a design-build is you let one entity do both the designing and the construction. The third one is design-bid-build. This is sort of a conventional way, we used to do it, prepare plans and specs to 100%, bid it, and award it to the low bidder. And the final one was the public-private partnership. Now, we colored this in particularly in a certain way, so the dark blue goes from step one, screening alternatives. And then if you follow the dotted line down to public-private partnership, you move from step one to step three in a public-private partnership type arrangement. If the city goes back to a progressive design-build, a design-build, or a conventional plant, you can certainly do that, but you need to then go back to do step two. You can't do design-build in the state of Florida by law without having what's called the design criteria package. You have to define the project to a level that would allow bidders to be able to make a rational submittal. And for a detailed design, you need a basis of design report, so that those bidders could tell you what exactly it is they're going to do. So there are alternatives, but those alternatives, you have to recognize that there are going to be time implications. And so Hazen and Sawyer took a look at what we think the time implications would be. This chart shows all four of those delivery systems that I just talked about. And a simple summary is that if we move from P3 to one of the other methodologies, we'll lose the city of Fort Lauderdale, I say we, because I live here, but we will lose between 18 and 25 months of time. Now, the final question is, how does the current Ridgewood IDE cost compared to the Corolla estimate? So we went back in and we took a look at what the Corolla estimate was. And of course, there's a time value of money, so you have to take the Corolla estimate and you have to update it to today's cost. And the way we did that updating is we took an index, which there are an indexes called the engineering news record, particularly for construction of plants typical to this. We indexed it to today's dollars, and then we indexed it again through a projection of what the index would be to the midpoint of construction. And so you take the original Corolla cost, you index it to the midpoint of construction's cost, and then you add to that the work that the city needs to do, because there are things being built by the city that are not being built by however you deliver this project. And the number came out to $644 million. So let's call that the Corolla number for a moment, but let's recognize that it's a class V estimate, it's not based on detailed drawings, and it's not based on any guaranteed of price. It's just an academy of cost estimation level V, which is the lowest level, the least accurate level. And then compared to the Ridgewood IDE price, which we have been told by the city, when you add the enabling works into it, it's around $666 million. And so the conclusion that Hazen and Sawyer would offer to you, or the observation is, based on the level of detail which has been produced on this project so far, those could be considered the same number. So they're in the ballpark of each other. So Commission and Infrastructure Task Force, again, thank you for your attention. Those are the questions that Director Dodd asked us to address today. We spent quite a bit of time getting into the details and the nuances of bench scale and pilot testing and predicted outcomes of treatment. So if you have those types of questions, we can answer them in any level of detail you want. I don't know, Mayor, if you would like to wait until after the next presentation and do it all at the end, or...
Yeah, if you can continue with the presentations, that would be helpful.
What's that?
For everybody in the audience who might not know also, what exactly PFAS, what does that stand for, and what exactly is that?
It's a series of chemicals, perfluoroalkyl-type chemicals. They're called forever chemicals. They're in lots of things that we've used. So in Port Everglades, for example, if you ever went out there with a blowtorch and you lit it, you would find a bunch of foam that dumps out of all those storage tanks, and they would keep fires and explosions from recurring. But that foam has PFAS chemicals, it's a chemical compound in it. Things like Teflon in frying pans, Teflon is a PFAS chemical. There is blood plasma that was created using PFAS as a component. And when these things were created, there was no understanding that it was toxic. Based on the toxicity reduction, or toxicity analysis reports they did when DuPont and others invented these things, they proved to be non-toxic. As we've learned more and more and more, we now realize that they are most likely hazardous. In fact, hazardous to the point where the entire world is looking at this. The World Health Organization is going to propose a regulatory number. EPA is going to propose a regulatory number. A number of states have already created regulatory numbers. And I'm not trying to worry any of my friends and neighbors, this is a handleable issue. Luckily, we do have PFAS in our water, but it's not at a very, very high level. But it's most probably at a level that's higher than what EPA is going to come up with very, very soon. And as I said earlier, this wasn't something that the city tasked either Reese, or Corolla, or any of the studies prior to those going all the way back to 1990 to consider, because it simply was not considered an issue of concern. But it is now, and so as you guys deliberate, you have to consider emerging contaminants of concern.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dodd? Thank you. We're going to take questions afterwards.
I'd now like to introduce Mark Janey, who's from Ridgewood IDE, and he'll be giving the presentation on the unsolicited proposal.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for the time this afternoon. I think before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment and certainly thank your staff, Greg, Susan, Alan. We've been working with your team now and your advisors since March of last year, and I think, kind of as the name implies, a public-private partnership. We've worked hard together, we've collaborated, and we've come a long way. And I know part of this is talking about some of the documents that have now been, you know, publicly distributed, the comprehensive agreement, the annexes to that agreement, and the Labor Services Agreement. And if not for all the work from, you know, that team, Neighbors Giblin, Hazen and Sawyer, we wouldn't be here today. So again, I wanted to say thank you. So appreciate kind of building off Pat and George addressing some of the why we need a new plant, why, you know, why this technology is the appropriate technology. I think we now want to kind of move to, okay, so why a P3? Why, and why this team? And then we'll talk a little bit about the project itself. So I think, without going into just sort of a reading through all of this, I think it's important to sort of say, like, what is a P3, and what maybe, most importantly, what is not a P3 specific to this project? This is not privatization of the city's water system. There was one of the unsolicited proposals that was received by the city. Their proposal was to effectively privatize the system, sort of take over the entire system. We recognize, going all the way back to 2020, when we first began to communicate with city leadership, that privatization was not something that the city was interested in, it was frankly getting a replacement for Five Ash. And so not only is this not a privatization, but I think it's important to acknowledge that, what is it? This is collaborating, partnering with a private team to bring the city a solution that you will own this new plant. You will have the ownership of the plant. Your staff will be operating the plant day to day, and we'll talk a bit more about that later on. You'll have full control over the rate setting of this, you know, of the facility and the cost implications around doing this project. And also, I think there's also a concern over control. Every step of the process, the city will maintain oversight and control from the design aspects and doing design reviews through the construction and inspections. And it's not just the city, the city will be leaning on their advisor, Hazen and Sawyer. You know, there are a lot of eyes, and a public-private partnership, you know, presents an opportunity for a lot of reviews and a lot of eyes on the project. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about kind of what it is and kind of what it is not. I think some of the other key aspects about a P3 is the, is some of the risk transfer. The risk of a cost overrun, the risk of continued inflation on costs, the risk of the cost of repair and replacement through the operating period, all of that through this agreement, through the availability payment, which again, we'll touch on later, that's borne by the P3, by our team, you know, that. So part of the, one of the things that Susan Grant will show is, you know, kind of that, the rate implication. And what you'll see is that there's a, that in her analysis, there's essentially a $4 sort of delta between the city doing it and the P3. And I think what's important to sort of identify is that within that $4 is all of this risk transfer that otherwise would be borne by the city. So another piece that George and the Hazen presentation touched on, you know, again, is the timeline. And I think an important component to identify is, you know, in that 18-month to two-year extension, it's not just, you know, it's, there are pieces that go to that two years. There's an inflationary aspect. So there's going to be an additional, just from the inflation components alone, there'll be tens of millions of dollars that could be added to the project by extending it out another 18 to 20... another 18 to 24-plus months. There's the additional cost of continuing to repair and replace Five Ash. And then there's certainly the continued risk of a major storm or a major failure at Five Ash that would create even more of a burden on the city. So, I think there's a lot there that goes to what that, being able to do this project, to get the city a new facility in less, in essentially 42 months versus an additional two years. And so, kind of stopping there for a moment, I'll turn it over to my colleague, the CEO of IDE, Leehe Turstein, to talk about the team a little bit.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you again for having us here.
Could you speak more closely into the microphone? Bring it down to you.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, okay.
Great.
That works. My name is Leehe Turstein. I'm the CEO of ID Water Asset. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our team for this project. We've started this process with the city three years ago. And for this project, we've teamed up with the leaders of, with some of the water leaders here in the state. And together as a team, we have done some of the largest, or the two largest P3s in water here in the U.S. Ridgewood Infrastructure led the Vista Ridge project, a transmission line that provides 20% of the city of San Antonio's water. And ID and Kiwi has teamed up here in the U.S. for a number of projects. And the largest, assuming the most famous one is the Carlsbad Desalination Project. The Carlsbad Project has been delivering 50 million gallons of water per day to the San Diego County Water, Drinking Water, since 2015 every day and has just now passed the 100 billion gallons of water supply to the city. The facility was, of course, built on time, on budget, with a very good relationship between the facility and the city of San Diego. And in this project, IDE will be performing the process design of the facility and the ongoing operations and responsibility for the operations and maintenance of the facility for 30 years. Kiwi, as our design build contractor, will be responsible for the design build contract of this facility and making sure we build that, as we said, the state-of-the-art project. A little bit about Kiwi. Kiwi is the number one water treatment contractor here in the U.S. And Kiwi has been working in the state of Florida for, since the 70s. And they have currently four infrastructure offices here in Florida. If you would want us to elaborate a bit about how Kiwi operates here in terms of working with local labor, training, and so forth, we have Kiwi, our partners here, they'll be happy to elaborate on that. These are just some of the projects that we've all done, but I think together, Kiwi and ID has done numerous projects here in the U.S. together. Each one of us separately is responsible for dozens of facilities around the world. Before I revert back to Mark, I just want to remind that about a year ago, the city and its advisors have had an independent evaluation of the different proposals. Our team has met or exceeded all of the city's criteria for this facility. Furthermore, since then, we've been working together with the city and its advisors to make sure that this facility and the commercial arrangement meets all of the city's goals, both technically, commercially, and with respect to labor issues as well.
So, just one other point on the team itself that I wanted to kind of come back to. So, Leehe mentioned a couple of the projects that our team has specific experience on, the Carlsbad Water Treatment Plant and the Vista Ridge Water Supply Project. And I think there's a misperception too with P3s is that the only time someone would consider a P3, they're a smaller, maybe disadvantaged, they don't have the operational, financial, technical, you know, team experience acumen to deliver something like that. And that's just, in fact, of those two examples, it's just not the case. The Carlsbad Project is for the San Diego County Water Authority, a AA+ rated utility agency that has considerable resources. And Vista Ridge is for the San Antonio Water System, a AA-rated utility. And so, then why do they look at a P3? And I think the answer there is to leverage the opportunity to get more done. I know in speaking with Alan Dodd, the Director of Public Works, there are concerns about his department's, you know, the resources and getting something of this magnitude done. And so, again, this is an opportunity to get more done, to leverage the experience, the expertise, and to do that, again, in a collaborative way such that, you know, there's full transparency to the process. So, again, just wanted to come back and highlight those points on those two projects. Looking at the time here a little bit, so again, we initially submitted in December of 2020. You know, through this now, you know, two-plus-year process with the city, unfortunately, the world has, you know, in many cases, kind of conspired against not just certainly us, but, you know, the, there are many factors that have made it difficult, I'm sure, for the city of Fort Lauderdale as well in the cost of projects. The war in Ukraine, the resulting sanctions put on Russia, the introduction of lockdown due to COVID in China. These are impacting, you know, two of honestly, the largest material supplier and equipment suppliers in the world. And so, the reason I mention those, in addition to, and certainly those aspects have, in addition to others, contributed to, you know, the highest inflation rates that we've seen in 40 years. And so, you know, all of these items unfortunately occurred over the last, you know, roughly 12 months. And because of that, it forced our team to have to go back and reevaluate, in particular, the base price. And in doing so, we recognized that from our original proposal to what we now have in front of the city, that price went up, you know, $100 million. And as soon as we were able to identify that, we brought that forward to the city. We met with city management in August. We presented that in a workshop to the commission in early September of last year. Again, in the spirit of kind of full transparency of wanting to demonstrate that, you know, these were just factors that when we initially submitted our proposal in December of 2020, we had indicated a schedule in there that got us to essentially an approval and notice to proceed in July of '21. And again, as the city went through its duty, its fiduciary responsibility to go through an unsolicited proposal process, to go through an open solicitation, it took longer. And then when we had these unforeseen global conditions, you know, it led unfortunately to this increase in costs. And I know that's something that's been, you know, on the mind and has been asked of us, so I wanted to go ahead and address that. So, kind of then moving to, well, you know, what is the current project? Again, it is, so our, you know, current maximum fixed price is the $485 million. That goes directly to the availability payment, which is $1.61 per thousand gallons. And I'll speak a little bit more about that on the next slide. We've talked a little bit about what those key features are. There's the nanofiltration, there's the ion exchange, there's going to be a new administrative building and laboratory. And I think important to note in one of the annexes, I believe it's Annex N, in the comprehensive agreement, talks directly to security, not only the physical security that will be at the plant, but cybersecurity as well, all of which will be, you know, part of this project will be implemented. And, you know, we have the responsibility of maintaining all of that, certainly in collaboration with the city. So, the availability payment, you know, what does that include? Well, it not only includes the components of the CapEx, of our contribution of the CapEx to build the new plant and some of the other pieces, but it also goes directly to the 30-year operating agreement. It has guarantees for the chemical and electrical consumption. So, yes, the city is paying for those, but we have to provide guarantees on those consumptions. And if we exceed those, then we pay for that. Those are guarantees that we have to make. Any and all capital, maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, that's all borne by us. That's all built into that availability payment, along with the oversight team that IDE will have at the facility, you know, 24/7, 365. So, another piece of this project, the Enabling Works, sort of unpacking that a little bit. There are a number of projects. When we first approached the city, it was very clear that we wanted to focus on just building the new plant. And so, you know, through conversations with the former city manager, we only submitted a proposal that focused on that. Through working with the city, Hazen and Sawyer, we clearly have identified a number of other pieces that need to be in place in order to build this new facility. And those are all, you know, we've called those Enabling Works. Some of those projects, we are going to be delivering. It just, it makes sense for those to be sort of within our fence line, if you will, and then others the city will be doing. The city will be financing all of those components. And again, they're going directly to, you know, the performance and building this project so that it can deliver the water to the customers of Fort Lauderdale. Another piece of this that I think is important to note is the city, in order to continue to, you know, provide, you know, a risk transfer, we came back and established a cap for the work that we would be doing. That way, there is absolute certainty on the pieces of the work that we'll be performing. And if for some reason, by the time we complete the necessary design work to finalize that pricing, if it's over that, then that's on us. We pay for that. And hence, the reason the city wanted to go ahead and have us establish that cap. So, again, kind of in a, and some of this you saw with the Hazen, but, you know, the benefits, you know, this will certainly reduce the color. This is going to be a facility that is being built to withstand a Class V hurricane. And you're certainly getting the risk transfer that we talked about previously. So, just briefly, you know, this is, these documents, you know, there's 100 pages just in the comprehensive agreement. There are several hundred more in the annexes and then Labor Services Agreement. But just to briefly touch on those, the comprehensive agreement really distills down to ensuring and guaranteeing kind of a water quality and quantity delivery at a fixed price. And if we fail on any of those fronts, then there are penalties that we pay. And if, and some of those get to a point, again, going back to the city having control, that if we continue to fail on any of those fronts, there are rights to termination. And, you know, and again, that's all spelled out in great detail in the comprehensive agreement, which I should also note that after some additional work with the city, with Neighbors Giblin, your legal, external legal counsel, and just since we initially submitted these documents last Thursday, we've really, again, advanced them to a point that I think by the end of this week, they'll be final and, you know, ready for the commission's final, you know, consideration. So, I just wanted to highlight that. The other document, then again, is the Labor Services Agreement. This goes directly to how we will be working with city staff. And I think what's really important there is that the city maintains the absolute control over how employees are incentivized, you know, their salaries, their benefits, the hiring, the retiring, you know, any disciplinary, that's all going to be run and managed, you know, by the city as they do now through the collective bargaining agreements that are already, you know, in place with the local Teamsters. So, I think with that, I'll turn it over to Susan Grant to talk through a little bit of the rate implications. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to go over a couple of slides. These are unchanged from the previous time we presented them to you. But for the sake of everyone being able to see, there's four rows here. That first one represents the initial proposal that we had received that goes back to December 2020. And as Mark had said, that initial proposal was at $385 million as the CapEx. At that point, we hadn't put together what the Enabling Works would be. But at that point, the estimated average increase in year 10 was going to be 116%. So, the average water bill currently in 2022 is $31 a month. That's for 5,000 gallons in average water bill. And that would go to $66 a month. Keeping in mind that over that 10-year period, the rates were already going to be going up about 3.6% a year. So, 36% of that increase was already going to happen whether we built a water plant or not. That second row looks at the $485 million CapEx and then $150 million of Enabling Works, which is what our initial estimate was. At that point, we started talking to our P3 partners about ways to have a lower impact on ratepayers. And we negotiated that the city would finance 75% of that CapEx, 100% of the Enabling Works, and then carve out the chemical costs because we do have that other water plant, so we'd have some economies of scale, and also be able to save on sales tax. So, when we ran those numbers through the rate model, the increase in year 10 is 139%. So, the question is, hey, if the city did the project alone, what it would cost, what would it be? What would that increase be? And again, the only way you know for certain about what our cost would be is if you did an RFP. But this uses those same numbers, the $485 million CapEx, but it just assumes that we're going to finance that whole thing ourselves. Under that scenario, the rate increase is smaller, but not significantly smaller. So, instead of 139%, it's 133%. So, a $2 difference at year 10. Again, as we said, we expect that if we did do it ourselves, it could take longer, it would take longer, somewhere between 18 and 24 months. And in that period of time, we would expect inflation to bring the cost of that CapEx up. But again, I have really no way to do that, to estimate that. And then that final row includes the additional $31 million of Enabling Works. So, this is the 485 and the 181, that's the 666 number that we've been talking about. And at that point, we're looking at a 10-year increase at 143% or that average water bill being $75 a month in year 10. Just so you could see, this is an excerpt of a big spreadsheet that I have that we sent to StanTech, our rate consultants, and they're the ones that run the city's rate model. So, this was the input into that. So, just a couple assumptions so everyone knows what we were looking at. We have our existing rate model and we made no changes to the existing base case. So, anything that we would have been spending otherwise is included in that. What we added was the annual payment to the P3 provider that has a 5% escalator for five years and then two and a half thereafter, the city doing the financing of the Enabling Works. There's a lot of different ways that we could set up that financing, and we haven't necessarily put together that. We used a 4.5% true interest cost, and this is using level debt service, which really is the worst-case scenario from a rate perspective. And when I say worst-case scenario, there are ways that we can either capitalize interest or wrap around some of the debt, so we push out some of the debt service. It would have a smaller impact on ratepayers in the short term, but in the long term, we would wind up paying more in interest. So, again, we haven't figured out that exactly, but what you're looking at right there would be the worst-case scenario. We did the additional chemical costs in there. And the rate structure we would put in place, about six months if we approved it. And the rate structure we would put in place, about six months, if we approved a comprehensive agreement, it would take us about six months to put together the financing. And we would have to have the new rate structure in place in order to support that debt service. So, that's what I have on the financing piece, is I'm going to give it back to Alan to wrap it up, and then all of us will be available to answer questions.
All right, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the last slide. So where we are right now, we are pretty close to finalizing the comprehensive agreement, all of the annexes and the Labor Services Agreement. And you can see there's a few annexes that we still have to put some final numbers in. But essentially, it will be completed over the next week, week and a half. We intend to have a public meeting next week. It'll be a virtual town hall to share information that was put out here and help to get more information out to folks. And we are still targeting to bring this to you for a decision on February 7.
So that town meeting, will that, you say it's going to be open to the public. Will the public be able to ask questions of you and other members from the developer to be able to respond at that time?
Yes. And again, it will be a virtual town hall to get more, get more people to be able to participate.
Participate, right.
But there will be a place they can put in questions, and we're working on a way that they will ask questions during the meeting.
Okay, great. And when is that?
We're looking probably Wednesday or Thursday next week. As you know, Ashley has been out, so we weren't able to lock in the time. We hope to finalize the date and the time over the next day or two, to give about a week of notice to the public. Again, targeting next week and possibly a second one the week after that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Dodd. So Marilyn, we've used up our hour, so, I know. Yeah, but I just want to say that I want to thank everyone who participated so far in the presentation. There are quite a few people on this commission who have not had the opportunity that Commissioner Glassman and I have had over these last couple of years to have really already been familiar with a lot of the terms and conditions that have been described today. And I think Mr. Herbst also had part of his tenure with the city, also had some exposure to this. But needless to say, new terms, new conditions, new, different asks have been made based on this presentation. And so I think it's only fair that the next time we meet, which would hopefully be sooner than later, that the Infrastructure Task Force members would then have an opportunity to ask additional questions, as will members of the commission. And we'll also be able to take public comment. Having said that, we are having town hall meetings, virtual town hall meetings, so questions that you may have today, you may get them answered then, so you don't really have to come back to another joint session of the two bodies. But we appreciate all the efforts you're making, Mr. Dodd and everyone on your staff. Susan, thank you so much for meeting with members of the task force, members of the public, and members of the commission in trying to bring closure to this process so that we can move forward and ultimately get a water treatment plant built in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So having said that, do you have any, how would you like to conclude, Marilyn?
I would like to conclude by saying the third time's the charm. Remember in December 6, when I talked to you about this was the second iteration of the presentation? This is the third iteration. And with the addition of the pre-presentation about the history and how we got to this, and the fuller description of the terms of the P3, and the consequences and the risk transfer, and what you're getting for what you're paying, I think this is much more comprehensive view for the public, and it's an easier view to understand. So I'm looking forward to a wide distribution of this material and the public meeting where people will be able to answer questions.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask you a question for Marilyn?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So Marilyn, Happy New Year, first of all. So you wrote a very detailed email on January 2. So my main concern, before we move on to the public forums and another joint meeting, have you been able to get satisfactory answers to your email of January 2 to the commission and to staff?
I believe so. And if you recall, I sent you individually a memorandum with some questions, and I met with Susan and Alan on those questions. And the curious thing about this whole situation is, they show you the end result. And what I was interested in is what are the inputs into the end result? And so when you look at what we're paying the partner to do this, it comes out, ching, 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 to $1.44 billion. Immediately, everybody got, oh, terrible. But it's not. When you think of what you're getting for the $1.44 billion, you're getting a fixed price, a fixed time, operation, a professional maintenance, maintenance and operation, and you're getting a 30-year warranty. Think of it like a 30-year warranty on a car. Every pump, the roof, every piece of equipment that needs to be replaced or repaired within 30 years, you've transferred that on to the piece, to the partner who is giving you the warranty. So when I, and I apologize to my fellow members, they haven't had an opportunity to see this because I just got it last week. And when we meet, I'll go over these spreadsheets with them. But yes, the answer to your question is yes. I asked those questions, I've got wonderful cooperation from the staff, and I will share that with my committee members, and we'll go forward with that.
All right, great. Thank you. Well said, all right. So I'd like to adjourn this joint meeting. Thank you so much, everybody from the task force, thank you, members of the commission. May I? I was going to say, let's just take a 10-minute break before we begin our new meeting. Yes, Commissioner?
Before we do that, if I may, so you may recall that I had asked for a longer workshop, hopefully one that would follow our priority and goal-setting sessions, because I really think this issue deserves a lot more than just an hour discussion. I appreciate what we did.
Well, before you came in, we had discussed that. We're going to have another session.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was trying to listen to it upstairs before I came down.
Yeah, I know. Before you came in, I had indicated to the public and to the commission that today it looked like we only had enough time for the presentations. We'll have another joint meeting where we can ask questions.
Do we have that set yet? Because I don't have that on my calendar, so.
We have not set that yet.
Okay. Will it be a lengthier one that allows for public input as well?
Well, first of all, we're having two town hall meetings, which I would think that if individuals have questions, that they could certainly get them answered during those town hall meetings. Those are two. So I'm sure there'll be others who will not be able to participate in those town hall meetings, and we will, I think we should allow for time for public comment. But I would hope that enough answers could be given to those individuals before our next meeting so that we don't have to, you know, have three- and four-hour joint workshops. Perhaps we can just keep it to an hour and a half or so. I'm hoping that. So let's, but I think we should schedule our next workshop, say, at 11:30 rather than 12:30, so it gives us a little bit more time to hear questions from the task force as well as questions from the commission. Does that make sense to you?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right. There being no further business, thank you very much. We'll meet back in 10 minutes for the conference meeting. Thank you.